Thank you, welcome to the April 25 special meeting of the Board of Education. This is a special meeting, therefore we work according to the agenda. Welcome, we're still being televised, I've been asked to remind people because apparently people have forgotten sometimes. Mr. Superintendent, I believe we are here as a first item to discuss reductions to the previously approved budget in anticipation of state funding loss. I believe a straw poll was taken at the last Board of Ed meeting and you came back with some information on how that would be implemented.
Right. May I respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I offer that perhaps we could begin by celebrating the freedoms we have by saying the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Off I go. Just to further clarify what you said, Mr. Chairman, also it's not only because of the loss of state funds, it's also the directive to comply with the 2.5 percent soft cap legislation. That's what led to us having to create such a reduction scenario. At the last meeting, as you rightly stated, we were given direction. We took that direction and we've now reworked this. We also now have included the reductions slated for the high school. We're working diligently on a short timeline, this was finalized at 1:10 PM this afternoon. And we did also, we respect our employees and we wanted to have the opportunity to speak to people directly about the conversation that we'll have this evening. So that's why you had not seen this in advance, so...
And that's perfectly fine and we certainly applaud that because there's nothing worse than knowing that your position might be on the chopping block to hear it on television.
Right. And as I've stated before, this is simply a recommendation in response to the directive that you provided to us. So I'll move down this quickly and hopefully people could see it on the screens, if not there are some extra copies there. I can't actually see the screen and I have glasses, so I'm going to use the paper. The top portion of the personnel certified, certified personnel reductions now includes a library media specialist, it's listed as library media teacher. What we're proposing, to achieve what you wanted to put back in is to not fill one of the unanticipated retirements in position and then ultimately that would be shared between, a single library media specialist would be shared between our two elementary schools. The secondary reductions are there. Our, my central administrative colleagues will be more than happy to address those. Donna has worked closely with the high school, teacher leadership teams and the administration and this is what has emerged from those discussions. The middle school reductions came from, obviously, the middle school administration. Anything in yellow is what you asked us to address. So when we get into the middle of the page, personnel non-certified, there's a restoration of the Student Assistance Center tutor and moving down further, other reductions, there's an additional reduction to the funding for Capturing Kids' Hearts. The three athletic reductions proposed previously have all been restored. And speaking with the athletic director, his preference was, assuming that this budget passes at referendum, once he has a number approved, he'll go make the necessary reductions in every other sport to cover, in their lines, which are few, to cover the expense of continuing that, three programs. And that really, that summarizes it. The last slide is not any different than what you saw the last time. There's been no effect on this at all, so it's exactly the same as it was. Nothing has changed as of today. So, that's our work to implement the directions that you provided to us.
Just to make sure that I understand the administration's positions, that your preference is still for the first budget reduction scenario? Although I understand you'll do what we tell you to do, but...
Well, I didn't even, I'm kind of, I'm kind of caught flat-footed because...
I always like to ask because you may have gone through this and said, "Oh, maybe this is a better scenario." And you may not.
Well, I think the first scenario that we presented was what we were recommending.
Yep.
The board, you have the authority to change that and you did that by asking us to do this.
Correct.
So, to come up with a different scenario.
Right.
So I'm hopeful that you didn't send us on exercise in futility, frankly.
Okay. I understand, but I also want to make sure I understand, your position is that while you didn't want to have it in exercise and fertility, you're still, after going through this exercise, your preference is still to have the first budget reduction scenario?
Sure. That's why we presented, to begin with.
Okay.
I'm, I don't know, I'm confused by the question, but I understand the chair's prerogative to answer, ask the question, so I'll ask it directly. Yes?
Yes, this is Ralph.
Thank you Gary and team for this information. Thank you also to the principals and the other people that you had work with you, both on the original scenario and this scenario. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this new scenario because we, using the expertise of our hired staff that we pay a million dollars plus two, I believe that they know what's best for our students and they've taken what we've suggested from the last meeting and implemented it and I think it's time to move on. I think we could talk for another many, many hours and all like one thing or another thing, but just like in our home budgets, there's only X amount of dollars and we don't get everything we want with X amount of dollars.
Okay, thank you Mrs. Rell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Burke seconds. All right, now's the time for discussion. Now, Mrs. Young.
So the budget process this year has been particularly difficult, given the scenario played out at the state level and the superintendent has done an excellent job of advocating for the district, both at a state level and also with boards, to ensure that an acceptable budget would be passed by both the town council and the Board of Finance, a truly percolating effort. That being said, it is incredibly frustrating to me that this budget reduction proposal seems to rely primarily on staffing reductions that would affect students in many different ways. I'm very concerned about Avon High School students being adequately served with one less guidance counselor, given the enrollment numbers. Just because other schools force higher guidance counselor student ratios doesn't mean that this is a good idea. I'm also concerned about Avon High School students having too many opens and not enough options for electives. This would be backsliding towards the way things used to be and not headed in the direction we want to go. I also believe a Student Assistance Center coordinator is a critical position to this district and one that supports every single student in this building. And many students have come and parents have written letters, students have come here and spoken and it is not a position that we can afford to lose. Additionally, I am also thinking about the fact that the district is going to undergo a five-year follow-up to the NEASC evaluation. How will various staff reductions be perceived by the evaluators? I am concerned about potential consequences related to years of cutting programs and staff and how this could result in Avon High School no longer being seen in the community as a comprehensive high school. To be clear, I do support a multidisciplinary support services approach, one that includes social workers and I applaud the administration for adding one additional social worker to the currently, one currently employed. There must be a way to keep this new position in place while making other adjustments. After having listened to everyone who spoke at the last meeting and being here until almost midnight and having had time to process what we heard and what has been suggested by way of two separate budget proposals, I would be in favor of several adjustments. And I don't know if they will all work, I'm hoping we can discuss them tonight. Mrs. Blaia had sent out some suggestions to us based on what she calls Budget A, which is the first budget that Houston made reference to a moment ago. I think we should eliminate Capturing Kids' Hearts in its entirety, which would provide an additional savings, I think, of $23,400 to support a SAC tutor. I think we must restore the guidance counselor position at least part-time, if not full-time. We could possibly do this by reducing the Chinese program at the elementary and lower grade levels, though keeping it here at the high school. It's a $96,000 program that we outsource and I agree that somehow we can get our athletic director to work with the coaches and student athletes to figure out other fundraising options for sports. I would like to restore a theater elective at the high school to a .4 or a .6, but eliminate it at the middle school. And I'm not sure how else to figure this out, but I am scared for our district. I'm scared for our community and I take this position, as do my colleagues, very seriously and we need time to talk about this. This is not a decision to be made at 11:30 at night.
Okay. Mrs. Blaia?
Thank you. I also wanted to thank the administration for going through another process to kind of figure out, I think you guys have given us every possible optional scenario that we have, could possibly want at this point.
As Laura said before, I, for my purposes, I was trying to go through this weekend to see how we could possibly move things around and pay for things that I thought were priorities for the majority of the board members. I also used what I call Schedule A, which the superintendent just said was his preferred budget. I think that we can do a lot of the things that we want to do using that, you know, with less pain, using that original budget. So for my purposes and my, the proposal that I sent to all of you, that's what I was doing. I think the Capturing Kids' Hearts can easily be swapped out, the remainder for, to support SAC while we transition into the new program. I think the Donna and Kim are working really hard to get that up and running. They did say it would take three years, so maybe we could do it on, maybe just for one more year to have kind of that support in place as we work through getting the kinks out and making sure all the kids are getting the services that they need during the transitional time. If we eliminate theater at the middle school and keep a, at least one elective, as Laura said, I would support that. That does retain all of the programming after school for all of the students to participate at Thompson Brook, at the middle school and at the high school, right? The theater plays would still happen, I think? The plays are still happening, that was never on.
That was never...
And, you know, the guidance counselor, I think is a serious, a serious loss, I agree with Laura. I would, my, the pitch that I made was to eliminate Chinese at the elementary level. I understand, I'm just one board member, but I was trying to kind of find some places where we might be able to, to agree on some reductions to kind of pay for the priorities that the board had explained and expressed last week. So, also the sports, I think it's really important that it doesn't have to be a doomsday scenario, that we can get people to, I know some of the sports really work hard on fundraising. I've been in contact with the boosters, I think there are ways that they can kind of come up with a hybrid. None of us want to see these sports eliminated, I know that they're really serious lifelines for a lot of kids and they can come up with a hybrid with the athletic director, so I would support that, but I think the funding for that, we would be able to use that to restore the theater elective in part.
Well, may I point out to you that the current proposal before us that's been moved does maintain the theater option, does maintain the sports, does maintain the Student Assistance Center with the tutor and does completely cut out Capturing Kids' Hearts. In terms of cutting Chinese, just letting you know, it doesn't occur at the high school level, it is, I believe not.
No, it doesn't.
Stand corrected.
It does.
It's also one of the few programs where we don't pay the full cost, we pay only one-third of the cost. The other two-thirds of the cost is paid by the Confucius Institute. So I think that would be short-sighted to cut that. All of the elementary school principals have said they're interested in maintaining it and we've been growing that over a period of years, so I have a problem with Chinese.
Right, so that also provides planning time for the elementary teachers?
Correct.
So if we took that away, we'd have to give them something else, we'd have to hire somebody else to provide planning time.
One other challenge I see in cutting Chinese is we have students at the high school who have already taken Chinese 1, 2, and 3 with expectations of taking 2, 3, and 4 besides the eighth graders coming up who expect to take Chinese. So, they wouldn't have a language and there'd be some disconnect. So if there's a bigger discussion of, you know, changing our languages, I think you have to at least take into consideration the students who are anticipating those languages in high school. I share some of the concerns about the guidance counselor. I know, I know the data shows the average number of students per counselor in Connecticut may be 400, 450, you know, the number we're given, but if you look at the student per counselor ratio for high schools, I think it's closer to 200 and if you look at our neighboring districts, most of them have below 200, so similar to what we have today. So if we go ahead and reduce a counselor from the high school, our counselors will have a much tougher burden going forward with more students, which bothers me because it affects every student in the high school, so I think that's a challenge going forward. Yeah, the other issue I have, and I've mentioned at the last meeting, in the past we didn't know who, or what the positions were that were being cut at the high school and I also fear going back to the days when there are too many opens, but, and, you know, now we have some names associated with those positions, makes it even more difficult knowing who the people are, but we don't have a choice in some situations, but I fear that once the schedules are made for the students at the high school, we will then realize how difficult these cuts that are listed up there right now at the high school, you know, there's, you know, .4 here, .6 there, but when it comes down to students not getting into classes or not being able to take the course that they anticipated, I think it's a bigger problem that we're going to face going forward and, you know, I know in the past, we haven't always made all the determinations before the referendum, so I would hope that some of those considerations be taken later when we see how the full scheduling takes place at the high school.
Houston, can I just clarify something?
Sure.
I was speaking about this Schedule A and you said you wanted to point some things out to me, but you're using, you were using the new, this one.
Correct.
So what I'm saying is, we are in the new and improved, in this, in this reduction scenario, the most recent one, I, my hope was that we wouldn't be funding the sports, that we would be actually not using that money for those, that we would be supporting a hybrid model, that the students and the parents would be working out with the athletic director.
Okay.
So that's, so the, what I sent you this weekend was what, why I was working off of this.
Right.
Because this, you're now giving up a librarian at the elementary school level and a social worker to, to get what the, in the new, this is a big, you know, a serious thing. You're restoring sports, but you are eliminating the social worker and you're eliminating the librarian at the elementary school.
Let's just clarify, we're not adding a social worker, we're not eliminating a social worker, we don't have that person now.
But that's the motion pending before the board. All right, Mrs. Zeroli, did you want to comment?
Yes. So looking at the enrollment, I have a question that I would really value hearing the board's view on, because the statement has been made several times that we've specified where we want to be with class sizes, but I don't, this board hasn't spoken to their view. So, when I look at the class size per the contract, grades 1 through 3 are maximum of 23 and in my calculation estimation, it looks as if we could change from a, especially grade 2, and still be well within, still well under the contract size. It would be approximately 20.5 students, looking at just what's on this page that we have, I'm not looking at both grades, both schools. So I would appreciate hearing from this board what their thoughts are on the contract size because we're not at the maximum for most classes. And that is something that I believe we should be going more on and then we wouldn't be talking about a guidance counselor, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'd like to hear the board.
All right, Mr. Shu? Sure.
Kathy, I agree with you, I think you make a good point, that if we can make adjustments, that we do have some room and I know that Gary, you always anticipate that you never know what's going to happen over the summer in terms of enrollment, it could grow, but at this point, it looks like we do have some wiggle room, so I would be comfortable with allowing the class sizes to increase a bit if that would save a guidance counselor and I would like to have the social worker that was recommended in the budget, so if other board members are open to that, I would be interested in hearing that.
Mrs. Young?
So I believe at the last meeting, I had also expressed similar concern, that I thought that we did have some wiggle room, by all appearance, to the enrollment projections for the younger grades and I would be in favor of proposing or doing what Mrs. Blaia was saying, by adding some students to our, changing the schedules to a different level by doing so.
Okay. Further comments? Mrs. Blaia?
The comment that I would have is, my concern with that would be, I heard the administration say at the last meeting, I think, that you would like to keep it under 20. Is there, what is your opinion? Do you guys have an opinion on that? Is 25 doable? Do we have enough teaching assistants? Do we have, is it really, or 23, I'm sorry?
Up to grade 3, it's to 23, grade 4 to 12, 25.
That's a contractual maximum. Right. So is that it? Mr. Superintendent?
I can only speak for my tenure here. Historically, class sizes at the elementary level have been, what I will say, is a area of concern for parents of those, of elementary students. Even when, even using the numbers that we have now, we do receive commentary that they're too large. I professionally cannot ethically recommend to you to go near that class size cap, particularly in K1, 2. It's a lot of youngsters to manage on a day-to-day basis. Now, we've, we've had a couple of years where we've had to go over the class size cap and it was expressed to me and other members of the administration that that's not, that was not comfortable for people who have children in the elementary schools. It's also, it's been discussed with me that teachers are concerned about that class size. So, with that, with that being said, we did in fact reduce at the elementary level, understanding that we really won't know our enrollment until August and no matter what you decide, at the end of the day, we may have to add teachers back into the elementary level. It doesn't historically happen any other level because obviously they're spread out. So, you know, I'm, I'm an active proponent of smaller class sizes. I understand, you know, I know, we're all in the same place. We don't like any of this, any of these reductions, but, but that has been communicated to me, both sides of this issue has been, has been communicated to me by both our own staff and our parent population and they're looking for lower class sizes.
I also echo what Gary said, I've heard feedback from parents with their children.
Saying that they were worried about the reduction of first grade or second grade, so I think that's important to take into consideration.
Okay. I think Mrs. Zeroli wants to speak again.
So the other, the only other point that I would, two points, sorry.
Pass this one down.
In the last board package that we had, I did not comment on a transfer because, because I generally just accept the transfers, but I need to raise it, given that we're talking about picking on, in my opinion, we're picking on certain sports. And I realize that now the adjustment doesn't do that, it allocates across all, which is something I appreciate. But in the last board package, and this isn't the first time, there was another transfer for CREW for unexpected unbudgeted expenses, adding another transfer to CREW. And this isn't the first time that I've noted this. So, we're adding to CREW on a regular basis, unbudgeted, unexpensed, unplanned, and we're going to talk about taking away from some of these other sports amounts that are less than what we keep adding to CREW. I had, that's a concern to me, that is an inequitable allocation to a sports team. And so that, that is gravely concerning to me and I, that's why I do appreciate when we go across the board equally and I still will come back and say, I think the pay to participate needs to be considered. You know, if we're going to fundraise, there's a way to do it by sports, yes. CREW does a great job of fundraising, but clearly something's not working if we keep seeing transfers to CREW. So, that's one of my points. The only other point is, at this juncture, given the concern with the guidance counselor that was raised that I have heard and I appreciate, and it's not saying I don't appreciate the loss of the other teachers on here, I do, but in terms of a guidance counselor, they affect every student. The SAC, it was said earlier, affects every student, that is not true. A guidance counselor affects every student, so I would be strongly in favor of keeping the guidance counselor and in all honesty, go to supplies. Cut supplies. I think that some teachers could do without some supplies. I've seen the store rooms that we have supplies in, we have a lot of supplies.
Okay, who else wishes to comment? Mrs. Young?
So to clarify my comment is that the Student Assistance Center tutor is available to all students, you don't need a 504 plan or IEP plan to get...
We're having trouble actually here.
I know and I don't know why, it's probably because it's not plugged in.
Ah, okay.
I'm guessing it's turned on, I'm sorry. Anyway, the Student Assistance Center coordinator tutor position could potentially serve every student in the building, not that they do that on a daily basis, I believe they serve anywhere from 30 to 40 students per deck. As far as the class size go, I hate the idea of having larger class sizes, but with 17 and 18 and 19, his, in a elementary grade, kindergarten, first, second grade at this point, if we had to add another section, we could ask for supplemental appropriation to do that, just like we had to do at the beginning of this fall. Enrollment is unpredictable, right?
Just for clarification, we, we did not ask for supplemental appropriation each of the past two years. One year I added five staff and one year I added four. We had to do that within the confines of our operating budget because we understand that, you know, we're going to be, if we went for supplemental appropriation very early in the year, I already know the response, "So let's see how your budget performs." Well, because that's a quote that's been stated to me before, the problem with doing that is if we get in May and June and there's not enough money to cover it, then there's a bigger problem.
True.
And, you know...
But we could, we have to.
We could ask.
But we won't...
And you may not get it.
Right, we won't.
We could actually, and quite frankly and openly, I could, I could identify the funding source.
All right, further questions? Mrs. Young?
No, oh, does this work?
I guess, no. Why don't we use the one that works?
So I have one question, and that, I have a question and a few, a few comments. So the question is, the guidance counselor that's being eliminated in, in the revised piece of paper here, where, where will that, I know it happens to be a guidance counselor in the middle school, but will a guidance counselor be reappropriated from the high school to the middle school?
Yes. Yes. We have to, we have to follow the contractual language, with respect to seniority.
I understand that, but, because I've never quite, I'm sorry to say, understood the role of a guidance counselor in the middle school. But, you know, I don't know. So, but the reason that even though it seems like we are well under the limit of number of students per guidance counselor, is we have also eliminated social workers, and the guidance counselors were asked to share some of that burden. So I just want to make that comment, that it's not just guidance counselors, they're in theory playing another role as well.
There were, there were also, as you recall, psychologists were hired in providing direct services to students, too. So there wasn't, there's not a fewer number of staff. It's actually the same number of staff. It was just the category of staff changed.
So when you were adding this guidance counselor, this social worker back in to your budget as of last week, were we eliminating a psychologist?
No.
So we were adding?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And just my other comment is, I also think Chinese is one of those things at the middle school that is a frivolity. I mean, I just, when we're talking about the basics, and not having a librarian, or that, that to me is just an icing on the cake kind of thing. And I think that that can be reconsidered.
Okay. Final comments? Mrs. Blaia?
These are my final comments. Can I, can we discuss as a board, what the top five things that we want to save are, so that we can kind of work backwards as a group?
Well, at the moment, we've got a pending motion. So you can discuss, the motion is pending.
Okay. What, I, I want to get, I feel like if we can kind of identify the things that we agree on, that we want to save, then maybe we can, with respect to the motion pending, maybe we can revert back to these, the recommendations of the superintendent, Schedule A, and work, work off of that budget.
With all due respect, what did we spend five hours talking about last Tuesday night?
I don't know. I didn't.
Well.
I mean, discussion does have to happen. It's.
I understand discussion. We did have a discussion last time, and at the risk of recapping it, that has resulted in this set of proposed revisions, which addresses a number of the concerns expressed by a number of the board members. Does it address all of them? No. Does it address all of public concerns? No, because we don't have enough money to do that. You know, I don't want to have to tell everybody how to conduct a meeting, but the answer is, we've got a motion pending, you can speak for or against it. You know, if you want to make a proposal to amend, you can make a proposal to amend, in which case, it will, it will go. But at this point, we've been discussing for, you know, 35 minutes, and I, I think we're running out of discussion points. So why don't you state what you would like to state?
I would like to state that it sounds like we want to, I would like to revert back to A, that includes everything that they recommended originally. I would like to possibly swap the tutor for SAC, I mean, for capturing kids' hearts. I would like to restore one theater at point four at the high school, eliminate at the middle school. I would like to eliminate the sports, or find another funding source, if we can identify that here, to support them. And I would like to discuss how we can get a guidance counselor. So I guess, before I vote on Peggy's motion, I'd like to know what some of these, that there's a lot of money in this packet, and I don't know if any of this is available to us, in these professional development lines.
Are you making a motion to amend?
I, no, not yet. I think we need further discussion.
Jay wants to say something.
Jay?
I have further comment. And just looking at the list and more information we provided tonight, we see several situations in different departments, where an FTE is reduced from 1.0 to 0.6. And I don't know the entire department, if that still means we'll have a full 1.0, or if we end up with fractional teacher. I know one of the things we pride ourselves on and Avon, is the quality of the teachers and our staff. And I don't know if we end up with point fours or point sixes, if we're going to end up, you know, losing some of the, probably losing some of the quality we have now, but will that hinder our ability to then hire quality teachers, that are not working as a full 1.0?
When we were looking at the positions, we did our best to maintain all the 1.0s that we could, exactly to your point. We have a couple folks that are dual certified, that are now working across departments. We will end up with three folks that will be, have their positions reduced to either a 0.6, three of them to a 0.6. So the reductions, we had some part-time people. So for example, in science, there was a 0.6 teacher. There was a 0.6 reduction. So that person is not a point. So we will have a 0.6 teacher in math. We will have a 0.6 teacher in English. We will have a 0.6 teacher in social studies. And those will be the part-times at the high school, other than the theater piece. I know there's been some discussion around keeping theater just at the high school, and if that is the decision at the end of the evening, that point to theater, because we do not have enough at the high school to run other than one section, that particular course prior to the theater program here at the high school was run through the English department. So we could put that point two back in the English department, and that person would be a point eight.
So when it shows that we are going from a 1.0 to a 0.6 at the middle school for language arts, that position's really being reduced at the high school, not the middle school?
What is happening is the person at the middle school is least senior, so that is the person impacted. But what will happen is a 1.0 from the high school will go to the middle school, and then the 0.6 at the high school, middle school will teach at the high school.
It's all, it's all driven by the seniority language in the contract.
Further questions? Further comments? I'm sorry, we're not taking comments from the audience. Do our student reps have anything they'd like to say?
It's fine. I tend to say things when nobody cares. I think it's a fair point to say, I think it's an unproportionate number of people being cut to the high school, obviously. And I think, I don't want to be too harsh, but I wouldn't necessarily say we have the most currently competent administration advocating for our teachers here, where you're seeing basically only high school teachers being cut. We have our second interim principal. He hasn't really had a chance to learn the school. We don't have someone in the building truly advocating for us in this budget situation. So when Mr. Mal and our team try and figure out who to cut, there's not somebody who can really advocate for us. I think that's why we're being cut so harshly. And again, I'm the same thing with the guidance counselor being very important. And I liked this scenario better, but still.
Scenario B, or the first one or the second one?
B, the one today.
The one today. Got it. All right.
If I could just respond?
Sure.
Challenge with the.
There you go.
If I could just respond to that, that was a concern of ours, also, as the central administration having an interim that was here for a short period of time. So the staffing was done differently this year. It was done, I attended the meetings along with the assistant principal in charge of scheduling, and all of the department coordinators, because we felt it was important to have the input of those closest to the work, and that knew the impact of what it would be on students. So that was taken into consideration. The other piece, I know it looks a little heavier high school this year, but if you look back over the last couple of years, when positions have been reduced, it's come out of the middle school and not the high school. So it's hard to look at just one scenario without what's happened a couple of years prior to.
Mrs. Young?
So just for clarification also, I had hoped to create a motion tonight to allow public comment, but I was told by the chair that it is not allowed at special meetings.
Correct. You cannot modify the agenda unless the information is, but it's a special meeting.
So I have a question about the curriculum by design professional development that's listed in our packet here on page 11. And I'm wondering if this cost that we're incurring through the general budget for $35,331 could be eliminated? Since it's for outside consulting, we could keep the consultant up to the point at which per grant covers, I believe it's $24,666, something like that?
Which page are you referring to?
On 11.
Page 11?
Is there any additional potential cost savings by cutting the number of hours that we're bringing in the curriculum consultant?
I think we have to look at that a little more broadly, that piece, because the discussion of capturing kids' hearts, the curriculum specialist, and those, you know, two lines that support those events, through the Department of Teaching and Learning, I basically have four lines. One is for the team teachers, new teachers, it's really a salary line, that's kind of a wash line. I've got $2,500 to do student screening. Again, that's more personnel salary line. The other two lines are the only two lines that I have for administering the Department of Teaching and Learning, in terms of working with all teachers, and ultimately, students on the curriculum, instruction, assessment, teacher evaluation, professional development, everything that falls within my department. So if those lines are zeroed out, in essence, you're asking me to run the department with no money, and there's no other department or building that's being asked to function with absolutely no funding. So while it looks like a lot of money, it is, because there are two lines that support the entire department. And already, there's been about a $50,000 cut to make some of these advancements. So I just want to put that out there, that while it looks like a quick and easy amount of money, it would zero out my department completely in terms of funding for next year.
But wouldn't there be grant funding up to $24,000 to support that role?
That's, supports the whole department. I don't, I mean, that's $24,000 to run everything that comes out of my office.
Okay. Further questions? All right.
One more question.
Well, have you finished? I would say you hadn't.
It's a separate question.
Well, go ahead and ask your question. Recognize that we're on last call, so I'll consider it as part of your previous question.
Have there been any further considerations for.
Cut at central office, such as for the program director, or any other positions that might be redundant?
All, every position, every department was examined by this administration, and we put forth the recommendation to you, that we believe met the needs of all students, and will meet the needs of all students. Bear in mind, we, we don't have a bloated central office staff.
Okay. Mr. Spivak, I think, your last.
This is my last comment. Okay. So in looking at page 11 again, Laura pointed out, I mean, I would be in favor of not funding capturing kids' hearts, or flipping consulting, which are, you know, outside professional development, and having that money available, as Connor said, for, you know, a point for where needed at the high school as a, as a teacher. I just am really concerned that when the schedules come out for the high school students, we're going to be facing a lot of issues, and students are going to end up with opens or not classes that they would like to take or need to take to graduate.
Okay. Mrs. Shu?
Okay. So for clarity, if it's labeled for capturing kids' hearts, you're saying that it's not necessarily used in that way? The money can be spread in your department differently? I just want to make sure that we're looking at it with appropriate eyes. Is it as clear-cut that this money is attached to this item, and so those things can be removed if we needed to?
It is used for that item for professional development, but if it's removed, then all professional development in that area is removed. So I mean, that's how we have chosen to use the funds to support professional development in the district. There still needs to be professional development. We're putting a new student support model in place in the high school. We have to support that. That's all about relationships. We use it for our new teacher orientation. So again, services need to be provided and training to our staff. That's one way we use it.
Okay. That makes sense. I understand what you mean. I just want to make one more pitch. I'm, I was so grateful to see the social worker put back into the budget. I am concerned to let that slip. I'm looking for assistance in finding a way to put that back in there. I don't know if, if anybody has a suggestion how to do that. That would grow my confidence in supporting this, and I would like us to have a unanimous vote of nine. I think that would be great. Is there any way that we can honor that request?
I'm with you.
Well, the short answer is, if you want to propose a motion, you can propose a motion to amend. If you don't, then we'll have a vote on the current motion.
Now, if I make a motion to amend, to add that to the budget, as it was initially proposed in A, then do we have to find the way to fit it back in?
I think we, we, in order to balance the budget.
Okay. Well, then I'd like, then I'd like to make the motion to add the social worker back onto the table, and I'm hoping for support from the board.
Okay. And where would the funds come to pay for that?
I'm wondering if there's a way, I don't know what it looks like, because I'm trying to understand the position that Gary is in as well, and what Tim Philon has to do in the athletics department, knowing how much, again, going back to the fundraising argument, I don't know that you can, can you put less there, and then they'd have to pick it up, or you can't? You have to budget for it, and then hopefully, they can help defray the costs for athletics? How does that?
Well, obviously, I talked to Tim at length, and, and frankly, if, if the board is going to act on the premise that there'll be some fundraising organized by Tim with various representatives, and I learned that there's a representative from each sport to the booster club, I don't want to, I don't want to introduce any idea that the booster club would pick up the dollar amount, what's it, $19,000, whatever. He would have to organize that fundraising. He chose not to go that way. He, because we talked about both options. He said his preference would be, after the budget passes, to go into every sport and reduce their line items. And he said that will be extraordinarily difficult for some sports. Because bear in mind, we have folks that run the sports, who are advocating, and also bear in mind that we already reduced those line items, some of those line items, and those are in full detail in the budget presentation I gave to you in November. That's part of that $2.2 million. So we've already trimmed. Someone made a suggestion about supplies. We've already gone there. What's left is not a significant amount of money, because we've already, we've already done that. And we did it equitably across the board. So, you know, I can't speak for Tim, but he, he abandoned the idea of trying to do the fundraising. And part of, part of me is concerned that, you know, we'll have programs that are dependent on fundraising, and then if that doesn't happen, then they fall off. It's a funding cliff. So while, while it's painful to have them go back into the lines, I can't disagree with them.
An idea was proposed to have families pay for three sports if their children participate in three sports, versus only paying for two. Would that help significantly, or not?
I, you know, thinking of the pay to participate, that was a board action prior to my tenure, and I believe that's a conversation that needs to happen in here. And I'm not sure it's now, or maybe it is, if, if that's your pleasure, but I opted not to increase the pay to participate fee. You may remember in the original budget, I proposed an activity fee, because the feedback I get is that it's inequitable that we're paying, you know, it's commonly said to me, we're paying for our students to participate in sports, but families who have students participating in non-athletic activities. in non-athletic activities don't have to pay anything. So, you know, there's a group of people that feel that way. I went in that direction, and that wasn't supported, to try to, again, be equitable. And just for the record, I don't support pay to participate, and I don't support activity fees. But we're in a place where, once you have a pay to participate system and you're dependent on it, and just so you know, I believe, Heather, you could throw something at me, but I believe that the total that's collected now funds about, maybe 20% of the total... Less, thank you. Less than 20% of the total cost of offering athletics. So it's a no-win either way.
All right. So the...
Can I ask a question?
No, you can't ask a question. Unless you can balance your motion with a cut, I'm going to have to say the motion's out of order.
Well, I'm looking for a place to cut it from. That's my question.
It's her motion. She talks.
Okay. So capturing kids' hearts is completely eliminated within this new B budget. Gary?
No, it's not. No, it's not. It still retains, what, $23,000?
Twenty-two-eight.
Twenty-two-eight. I rounded it up. I'm sorry. It's twenty-two-eight.
Plus the flipping group... What's the flipping consulting?
That's already taken out. The only thing that remained was, as I explained the last time, was the training for the new employees that we welcome at the beginning of each year. It's all that remains. I just simply rounded it to 23 instead of giving you the exact figure of 20-to-8.
All right. Not hearing a response from you, I'll move the motion out of... The motion to amend out of order. So does anyone else want to make a motion to amend? All right. Hearing none? The call is on the approval of the budget as moved by Mrs. Rell, which is tonight's budget. So all those in favor, could you indicate by raising your hands? So that's Rell, Burke, Spivak, Lowry, and Zeroli. All those opposed? That's Bleya, Young, Howard, and Schut. Okay? The motion then carries. All right. Next item is the consent item.
Motion to approve.
The only question is, I would like to pull B off of that, because I don't want... I don't know what the date is. So I would like to have the superintendent tell us what the date is.
Can you point to where the consent calendar is, please?
I'm sorry, I'm not following the...
All right.
Graduation date?
Grad...
No, it was the agenda that was circulated.
Oh, okay. Yeah, usually.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm happy to...
I'm gonna...
Normally, we don't discuss, but I'm happy to take the date so that it's clear.
June 20.
June 20. So that we're moving the graduation from...
And that'll be the last official day of school.
From the 14th to the 20th.
For students.
It's the 180th day of school.
That's correct. And that's consistent with your policy.
All right. So that's 5:30.
Let's hope it doesn't snow.
Well, no, technically, if it snows, we can ignore it. All right. Can I have... Yeah, we're past the date.
The motion to approve the graduation date, Tuesday, June 20.
We currently have a board meeting scheduled for that night?
So do. All right. Let me just...
I thought we'd take it up.
For procedural clarity, let me yank that item from the consent calendar. There's currently a pending motion to approve the consent calendar, which is the non-renewals and reduction enforced. Can I have a second? All right. Mrs. Rell moved. Mr. Burke second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. All right. So we're now... It's off the consent calendar. We're talking about item B, and I think Mr. Spivak has a good point. How are we handling that conflict?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think that's something that the board needs to discuss, whether you want to slide it down one day. We want to provide appropriate notification. Obviously, when we built the schedule for the board meetings, we didn't know how many snow days we were going to have. It does happen to land on the same day. What I would recommend to you, if you wish to entertain my recommendation, I would just move it to the 21st.
Okay. How does the board feel about that?
Fine.
All right. So we don't actually need a motion on that particular point, but we do need a motion to approve the graduation date being June 20. No, we pulled it off the consent calendar.
If I make a motion that we put the graduation date Tuesday, June 20?
All right. Mrs. Zeroli moves. Mr. Schut second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Carries. Okay? I think...
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Mrs. Howard moves to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned, and I thank our erstwhile cameraman.